Okay, next on the agenda is our Teaching and Learning Committee math update, Director Edwards.
All right, thank you so much, and my apologies. I'm not sure if it's cold or allergies or what it is, but I've got my water here. I was saving my voice in the previous conversation. Certainly, there were a couple of points where I might have jumped in there. And to that end, I just want to bring, mention a couple of things related to the previous conversation, specifically with regard to Read Act. I had com- or I'm sorry, the foundations implementation. I had commented and we had said five years. I just wanted to clarify that the implementation of that was a little bit different than the approach that we have taken to math. And I think that's going to be relevant to this conversation we have here tonight. Specifically, when we did this, and this was before my time in this role, this is my former role as principal at the middle school level, so I wasn't directly involved in it. But we did a K1 initial implementation, then we followed it into second grade, and then we followed it into third grade with the students. So it was three years of that before we were actually at full K3 implementation, and we've been in that place for three years now. So, and there are gaps, obviously, per the Read Act that are being seen across the state of Minnesota that have called attention to the need for a more comprehensive look at literacy skills and the development of literacy skills in our students. And so, I just thought, just for clarification, and to that end, I'm going to provide just a little bit, as a former social studies teacher, often teaching some courses in history, I can't help but provide a little historical perspective related to this conversation as well. Because I think it's important, as we give this update where we're at in our implementation, that we go back in time just a little bit to understand the historical steps that we've taken along the way. When I transitioned in my role from middle school principal into a K12 Director of Teaching and Learning role, one of the first conversations I had, and actually, the July of 2021, I remember it well, was to sit down with Gwen Moulden, our curriculum specialist at that time that was K5. And to have a conversation with her, as I was transitioning to a leadership role at the K12 level, to help understand where are our gaps, or where are things we should be paying attention to. And in that first conversation, we talked about, or she talked about, the need to pay some attention to our math curriculum. Because, again, we were at the early stages of implementation with the foundations related to our literacy, and we needed to spend some time and attention looking at our math. And looking at that across K12. And so, we began in that first year, 21-22, bringing together a committee. We looked at a vision statement for math, and you as a board have seen that presented to you in previous presentations, each of the last two school years prior to this year, as we brought forward adoptions, both in elementary two years ago and last year in middle school. And that was a K12 vision. And then we set out for, where do we start this work? And so, we identified, we wanted to start this work at the elementary level, because that was foundational, and we wanted, we knew that we had great inconsistencies with regard to how we were approaching math instruction. And again, we are coming somewhat fairly fresh out of our COVID experience. And so, again, this was 21-22 school year. We identified that we wanted to pilot some curriculum resources at the elementary level in the 22-23 school year. And after doing so, we made a decision in that spring of '23 to make adoption of the Bridges curriculum. We implemented that, began that implementation last year. Simultaneously at that time, in the spring of '23, we were looking at resources at the secondary level. And at that time, we decided we wanted to look at some secondary resources, particularly at the middle school level. And we identified a resource to pilot in the same year that we were implementing our K5 curriculum for the first year. And fast forward to this year, 24-25, we are in year two of our implementation of our Bridges curriculum, K5, and year one of our CPM curriculum at the middle school level. And we are, we, and throughout that time, so as not to forget, our 912 teachers have been engaged in this work, and we are continuing to engage with them to identify what are those resources that we see needing to help us raise the rigor and experience for our students in mathematics across our system, K12. So I just wanted to give that brief, take us back in time if you will, walk through that, and prepare for what we want to share with you tonight, which is an update of various phases of that implementation. And we, last week, had a Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, of which Director Olsted and Director Franz were participants in as the board representatives to this, and a very different experience that we took our committee through. That was an hour and a half. We don't intend to bring the board through the full experience, but tonight's presentation is intended to bring a presentation experience to you. And with that, we're going to advance. Our agenda is to talk a little bit about our rigor and our MCA achievement levels, which, the descriptors associated with that. Once again, we spent a significant amount of time with our Teaching and Learning Committee last week. We're going to give you an opportunity to be mathematicians tonight, and then we'll talk a little bit about some additional implementation updates. So, we all find, we've talked about it multiple occasions here, that we are drawn, and this came up in the previous presentation around our data, that what we, our work here is around our academic excellence and our commitment to that in our strategic plan. And specifically, again, this conversation is related to math, but there are many components to this. And I have here tonight, as our guest presenter, Jen Maloney, who is our Loan Differentiation Specialist here in the school district, and Prior Lake Savagery Schools, and is supporting much of the math implementation, as are many staff within our Teaching and Learning Department. Our peer coaches have played a vital role in supporting our work to date. Some of the conversations you as a board were having on the last presentation around what type of supports do we, are we putting in place? Do we have the right supports? Do we have enough supports? I think the answer is, we have some of the right supports, we could use more supports, but I know we have limitations around that. And so, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jen.
Thanks, and I'm going to use a mic, because I'm not really a podium kind of gal, so thank you for having me. I want to go back a slide. Nothing gets me more excited than thinking about academic excellence and also assessment. So like, this is the perfect meeting for me to join, so I appreciate you having me. I really do appreciate the sentence, though, and thinking about, like, honing in on the word rigor, right? But before we begin, I want to think about, like, our own lived math experiences as students. And for those of you that were here the other, last week with us, we all went around the room and talked about, like, what do you think, think back to your own math experience, maybe just a couple of years ago, I'm sure, for most of us, right? Like, what was that like for you? How would you be able to describe that in one word? Those of you in the audience, too, you can think about this. Turn and talk to your neighbor.
Logical.
Oh, go ahead.
Logical. Like, very logical. Thank you. Anyone else? Popcorn?
Teacher led.
Thank you.
Fun. I love math.
Great.
Not fun, I didn't.
Oh, that's fair, too. Thank you. Thank you for being real.
Memorization.
Thank you.
Oh, oh.
Everybody gets to remember.
I'll share what I, frustrated, I felt disconnected.
Thank you.
I'd say very structured. And I don't, I can't, like, put this into one word, but for me personally, there's definitely always, like, one way of doing things, which is like math, but, you know, one way of learning.
Frustrated in middle and high school and loved it in college.
I loved it also. I liked the problem solving.
Yeah, I think, just like the other day, though, there was a wide gamut, right? And, and I think that does play into, like, our own experience now, whether we're leading the school board, or whether we're parents, or, you know, whether we're teachers and helping teachers. So, thank you for going through the exercise with me. I'll circle back to that, but I want to go back to this definition. I, I absolutely love, and I feel like we could spend, like, an entire year just thinking about this definition of academic excellence. So I appreciate everyone that put forth and brought this together. Specifically tonight, though, we're going to hone in on rigor. So I'm curious, you know, we went through this exercise, too, the other night, thinking about, like, what does rigor mean to us? And I think that was important to, like, land on something together. As I reflected on, like, how does that portray how I support teachers? How does that enter the space as we think about what teachers believe? And how does that look for students, too, right? Because what might be rigorous to me might look different than maybe some of our peers. So what does that really mean to us? Here was the list of how the groups, so we had several different groups, and they talked through their thinking on this. But what is, there was challenging but not impossible, how many different pathways do we have, that deep thinking? And then we talked through, like, what does that look like when kids are entering that space maybe for the first time? Think about that first time when you thought, oh, wow, this is really hard, right? And I need to persevere through this. So what does that feel like, kind of in your stomach, you know, thinking about how you're, how you're entering that zone? They talked a lot about, like, how does that feel? How do you support kids through that? Like, it's okay to be wrong, to make mistakes, to learn and grow from that? That's something I think that I'm working through with my own kids at home, right? Like, we know as a journey as a parent, that's tricky. That's tricky not to, like, you want to support, but you cannot just go in and fix it for them. So we talked a lot through that. We talked about how to get in that zone, where it's like, you're in the right zone for being challenged, but you're not so overwhelmed that you just want to tap out, right? So how do you keep kids in that zone together? And then, like, the more that you do, sort of like anything, the more you get better at something, the better off you are, right? It's easier it gets. So talking through that and thinking about, as we continue to challenge our students and put them in situations where rigor is really increasing, how do we help support them in that journey? How do we help parents support their own students and their own children at home through that journey? This comes into play when we think about the standards. So here is one of, oh, how many did Ellen tell me there was? 27 or 29? 27 or 29 standards for fifth grade. The fifth grade teacher was with us that evening. And thinking about, like, this is one of 27 standards. When we think about this from, like, what would rigor look like in this context? So here is the standard, read, write, represent, and compare fractions and decimals, right? You need to be able to recognize equivalent fractions, you need to be able to convert them back and forth. What do we think that rigor would look like in this context? Keep in mind, when we talk about an MCA, and this is one tool, right, to measure how we're doing, and, and I love the fact that we were talking about different types of assessments tonight, that's sort of my jam, but there's different categories. So when you get the scores as a parent, you'll see, like, my child is in the does-not-meet, partially-meets, meets-or-exceeds. And we get the aggregate, then, to say, how are our students in Prior Lake Savagery Schools doing in the various contexts, right? Because we can break it down to, how are they doing in geometry? How are they doing in algebraic reasoning? But we have these categories, too, to define, what does rigor look like? Okay, so just play around with me here. What would you think rigor, a rigorous opportunity would be for students to engage with this standard? What do you think that might look like? Sorry, I'm putting you on the spot.
Say the question again.
What's that?
Let's say the question again.
What do you think, like, a rigorous problem would be related to fractions and decimals? For a fifth grader?
One of the words that came to mind the other night was, it would be like a word problem, right?
It'd be real-life context.
Okay?
Anything else?
The thought that came to my head was, like, something that engaged. I know that's not probably the answer that you're looking for, but the rigor, it was something that I noticed, like, when you're defining it in the slide above.
Okay.
It's like engaging a student to keep them wanting to know more. That, you know, for everyone, it's a little bit different.
For sure.
And so, engaging is, what comes to mind when you ask, what does the problem look like?
Yeah.
And engaging, I mean, for someone who hates math, to, oh, this is fun.
Yeah.
I like to problem solve, like, how do you? How do you have something that meets all of that?
Right, 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 right. So when I'm thinking more specifically, like, in terms of an MCA, because that would be tricky, right? Like, we want engagement in our classrooms all the time. In this assessment, though, what would it look like? So here, I'll show you an example, and see, let's just play this game of, like, where might this fall? So keep in mind our different categories of the does-not-meet, partially-meets, meets-and-exceeds levels, right, that we get the reports on. So here's the first problem. It's, this is a, this is an MCA released example from fifth grade related to that standard we were looking at. Abby catches six tenths of the ball thrown to her during a softball game. Which fraction is equivalent to six tenths? What do you notice about this problem?
It's relatable.
It's relatable. Yeah, like, for a fifth grader?
It's about softball.
All right, cool, 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 cool.
About fractions?
It's about equivalency, right? What are my options for answering this one?
Yeah, multiple choice.
Multiple choice. Got a lot of multiple choice? Is there probably one right answer? Probably.
Logical.
Right? Logically, it would be. What level of proficiency, going back to this last slide, do we think that this would fall in for an MCA related to the standard that I have shown up here? Five point two point, or five point one point, two point four?
Like, converting your fractions.
Yeah, you're converting your fractions. Uh huh. It's real world, right? It's a math situation.
Compare fractions.
Compare fractions, I mean.
Yeah, so do you think it'd fall in the does-not-meet, partially-meets, meets-or-exceeds?
For fifth graders?
Yeah.
I'd say partially.
Yeah. Why?
I just have a fifth grader, so.
Yeah. All right.
Great answer.
Great answer. Yeah, this one actually falls in the does-not-meet category, because it's only about recognizing those equivalent simple fractions. So even though, that's weird to me, right? Like, it's a word problem, right? It's like that real-life context, it still only falls in the does-not-meet. The other thing to know about MCAs, and maybe this is common knowledge to you, it was new learning for me, though, was, like, the kids, it's adaptable. So kids enter the space of taking the MCA, and they get, like, a generally meets-type questions first, and depending on how they answer, it goes up or down. So there's actually questions in the does-not-meet category, that if they get this correct, but nothing above this, that's how they kind of earn or get the score of the does-not-meet level. Okay? Good job. Really good. Really good. Okay, okay, so let's do another one. You can't cheat now, because you also might know this one, okay?
So, there are 100 people at the beach. Of the people at the beach, 80 did not go into the water. What fraction of the people did not go into the water? Enter your answer in the box. What do you notice about this one?
Not multiple choice.
It's not multiple choice. You literally have to text something in, you have to type something in.
And it's a word problem, so if you don't like to read, then.
Right. Another word problem.
I'm not going for that equivalency this time, right? There's a little bit more thinking involved. So what level, go back to our little list here, what level of proficiency do you think, or what level of rigor do you think is in this question?
I would say meet, and maybe even possibly. I'm, I'm curious, I'm curious if someone gave 80 out of 20, or if somebody said one-fourth, right? Like.
On the, on the testing website where I get these from, it tells you all of the acceptable answers and any of those equivalents would work. Uh huh.
Yeah, so I'm here, I'm curious, I can't wait to know. Does it meets or exceeds, or partially, what is it?
Yeah, it's only partially.
It is.
So, if you look at this list here, and I'll get you guys, I didn't want to give away all the answers, so I'll get you guys the PDF of this, but like, if you look at this list now, so all of these skills fall into the partially-meets category. And so, it's like, the does-not-meet and partially-meets fits into that partially-meets, if that makes sense. So again, if a student just gets this one correct, regardless of the type of answer they give, as long as it's, like, an acceptable answer, and they don't get anything higher than this, that only lands us in the partially-meets category. Okay, so you might be onto my pattern now. So, which numbers are equal to two and three fifths? Select the numbers you want to choose. What do you notice about this type of question?
Multiple answers?
How do you know it's multiple answers?
Select the numbers. You got to be cued into that. Does it tell you how many?
Not realistically, right? I mean, you almost have to check out every single one, kind of, just to verify. How many do we, I mean, I could put, we actually had to do these together the other night, but because I don't have the 90 minutes, you kind of left out, because I also had seventh grade ones. So I think there was some, like, sweating in the room, but that's okay, we helped each other, we had team, teams of tables.
There's actually three answers on this one, and this one is only at the meets. And you have to get all three. Interestingly as well, of the students, now keep in mind that every student got this question on an MCA, but of the students that received this one across the state, only 22% of them got this one correct. I took out the exceeds for, like, the sake of tonight, but there's also an exceeds for each one of these. And so, when you think about, like, here is the one standard, so this is just, like, the snapshots that I took from the last one, but this is the one standard, and here's the different categories of the does-not-meet, partially-meets, meets-and-exceeds. And again, these are the skills that kind of build. So like, these ones fit into here, and these two fit into there, if that makes sense. And then, these are the released samples that MDE puts out, so that's where I got those samples. And they have these for other, other subject areas, too, as well. We were just taking a look. And the whole point of that exercise was really to think about, then, how does that compare to what we have in our classrooms right now? Because again, when we think about that academic excellence, and we think about rigor, and we think about increasing those proficiencies in our students, they can't experience, right, this level of rigor for the first time when they get to an MCA. Like, we want to ensure that they're seeing that. And if any of you have, you know, those fifth graders at home, or especially that seventh grade example, too, that we showed the other day, it really is, like, they have to be able to see that there's more than one right answer, right? And for some of us who say, math is just one right answer, that's a little unsettling. You know what I mean? Like, wait, wait. I kind of was used to, like, and I liked to, like, that it is just one right answer, and there's multiple ways to get to that approach. The other thing that I think is worth noting is that as the MCA fours, and I think you guys talked about this earlier, as MCA fours are rolling out, so science is the first year for that this year, so they're all switching from MCA3 to MCA4, the proficiency levels are going to be changing, not like all over, just the titles of them. So they're going to be changing from that does-not-meet, oops, sorry, from that does-not-meet to a beginning, that partially-meets to an intermediate and meets an advanced. Really, the logic behind that, from what I'm understanding, is that certainly the does-not-meet doesn't say that you don't know anything about fractions. But in this journey of thinking about how kids are understanding it, and to what depth they're understanding it, we need them to get to here and here. There's some beginning level understanding, sure, they can find those equivalent fractions. Are they able to apply that in really complex ways? Not quite yet, if that makes sense. So, when we get those as parents for a fifth grade MCA this year, these are the different categories that will be listed. Questions about that? Keep in mind, this was like an hour and a half presentation the other night, so I'm really racing through it, I apologize.
Oh, it's great, thank you.
And so, really, when you think about, like, certainly, when you think about mathematical rigor, right, and we, and we have it called out in, in our strategic plan, of course, that procedural fluency is still important, right? But you cannot, just like that three-legged stool will not stand up, you cannot have that procedural fluency without really understanding deeply how that's happening, and then being able to apply that in deep ways if we want better results on those MCAs, right? So it kind of, like, needs all three components equally weighted. Questions about that? Any questions about the proficiency levels?
I'm so glad that the titles are changing.
Yeah, yeah, I do really appreciate that.
Even that, even that seemingly small update, as a parent, I look at that and go, phew, you know, because it's, it's kind of hard to get something where you say, your kid doesn't meet something, or only partially meets something. And to your point, you know, it, that's not what that means. I mean, really, that's not what that means.
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate the, the journey that they acknowledge that kids take, whether you're at the beginning level or at an advanced level, and everywhere in between, I can appreciate that change. I mean, I, MCAs need to be changed in a lot of different ways, in my opinion, and need to be updated, but, so I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see that change, even a seemingly smaller one.
Yeah. And I really appreciate, too, the progression, the way that this lays out. So when you're thinking about instruction, right, we're thinking about, okay, there's a starting point, right? Kids are in a, but it doesn't also mean that I have to, like, check out this list first, then check out this list, right? You can sometimes go, and you'll know that if you have those resources at home, that your kid is bringing home, not every single question that they're experiencing throughout the day is at that exceeds level, certainly. But do they have opportunities to be there? I would hope so, right? That's why we get a resource that is rigorous enough, where I don't have to think about, okay, now what else do I need just to get to the meets level?
And I also think it's interesting that you brought up, that I didn't know until last week, that the test is different for every child, or every student. And so, what I find interesting is, it's, you know, we just got a report on FastBridge, right? Completely different test. But it's so interesting to, like, what would those report, you know, when we, knowing that, which I didn't realize that before, so apologies if that was communicated before, and I didn't hear that. But I didn't realize that. So when you're reading a report on, on results and things like that, not every kid is seeing the same test, which I find fascinating. And like, to a lot of degree, that it's customizable, depending on how they answer things, but there's so much, perhaps, room for error, room for, room for a lot of things in that. So I found that really interesting. That was one of the biggest things I learned last week, that that was happening. It's, it's so interesting.
Yeah. Yep, and I think that that is new learning, for whatever reason, for a lot of folks, right? And that's okay. These tools, I'm just trying to help share with teachers, right, to think about, like, how do you lean in to the rigor, right? And how do we define that, when it, when you, when you want to layer that with your standards, right? Because we're all teaching the standard, we need to make sure that the resources aren't stuck in these two left columns, right? Like, I don't think we can achieve the gains we want to see on an MCA if kids don't get to experience those other types of questions on the daily, let's be honest.
Mrs. Maloney, I have a question. If they're changing the categories, are they also updating, changing, revising the cut scores?
They're not, like, so, I apologize, they're changing the category titles. They're not, like, changing the, like, the scale changes. So if you ever see a scaled score, those don't really mean very much, because those can vary, as far as, like, what these mean. So, when you think about, like, growth, you'd never want to go, like, scaled score to scaled score. That doesn't really, like, work from year to year.
I'm more referring to, like, and I know it changes from grade to grade, but like, meets is only, and I'm, this is just an example, but when you read a seventh grade score, and it's a 7, 5, 0, and it says meets, that only means that the student has answered 50% of the, of the questions correctly, approximately. That's what a cut score is. And if you go onto MDE website, and you go under MCAs, it explains how the cut scores are, how you read the score and what the cut scores are. So I'm trying to understand, if the categories are changing, are they going to be changing the number that goes with the cut score?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, because this is new to scientists this year. We're actually going to be lagged in getting the results, because what they did is they built out, I don't have the science ones loaded here, but like, basically, they have these same types of things for the science, and then they're going to go back in and assign the questions to the different categories.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments?
I personally really, really like the word problems, because in real life, they don't say solve for x. They give you a problem and, and tell, you know, and have you use the, the accumulation of math skills that you have in order to apply to that. So I know it's, you know, from, you know, so many decades ago, when we used to sit in a classroom and do one unit, and memorize it, and do one, you know, one problem, one after the other. And that may have happened when, when there was at least one, your answer. Now, they're actually almost like doing experiential learning, which is critical. And I think a lot of kids get lost in the constant repetition, but also doing it one unit at a time, so by the time you get to a summative test, like the MCAs, they may be getting an A in their class, but they don't remember what they did in October, November, in that unit. And now, we're building it all together, like they do in the collegiate experience And that may have happened when, when there was at one, your answer. Um, um, now they're actually, uh, uh, almost like doing experiential learning, uh, which is critical. And, um, I think a lot of kids get lost in the constant repetition, but also doing it one unit at a time, so by the time you get to a summative test, like the MCAs, they may be getting an A in their class, but they don't remember what they did in October, November in that unit. And now we're building it all together like they do in the collegiate experience of the spiraling approach, which is really, really critical.
Yeah, the other thing that I noticed too with this, kind of piggybacking on your word, um, problems, also the advanced includes making models. And I think that's something different for a lot of our kids, like, wait a minute, drawing a picture is rigorous, or drawing a picture is needed, I just know the answer. Uh, if you can't draw the picture though and make the model, I should have left the advanced, the, um, exceeds example in here, exceeds example wants to draw that picture. Like, you don't get the exceeds if you can't do that, for this, you know, for this release sample.
It proves that you understand it, not just that you got lucky and guessed, or you memorized an answer.
And I get it, I get it. I have a kid at home who pushes back on that daily. I feel the pain.
Well, I just have a question.
Yeah.
So, like, we talk about meeting this level of rigor that you think would help with, like, standardized tests and stuff. What can teachers do, like, in the classroom daily to make sure that kids are, like, getting those skills and practicing that, so then they get there?
Yeah, and my desire is that as we are getting newer resources, that that's already part of what is the experience for kids, so teachers don't have to think about finding additional outside resources on top of that, right? So like, my desire is that we would have that built into, whether it's reading, whether it's science, right, tho- those types of experiences. I mean, again, I know it's tricky for kids to think about, like, why do I have to draw the picture if I know how to do the algorithm? But again, if you're not going to try that and show and prove your understanding that way, you're not going to do well on this type of thing. And so helping teachers or having the resources right in their hands all the time, that, while again, I'm not saying that every single problem they're going to experience is always in that exceeds, that's certainly not going to be the case. Like, there's room in the resource to go throughout the continuum, I believe, but that's my hope, is that we have that already in their hands, and that student experiences daily for them. Because again, you can't just prep for this, like, two weeks before the test and expect to do really well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else before I pass it back to Dave?
Thank you.
Yeah. I suppose you don't want the mic. You got it?
Yep. So, um, I just wanted to go back to this particular stool, um, because this was one of the, uh, core things that we had conversation about when I was referencing earlier, the math vision that we made, uh, at a K-12 level, and that, uh, those initial conversations that we had in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, about what do we need to do, um, so that we can prepare our students for those different experiences, and real-time experiences in the classroom to the question that you just posed. Um, that is exactly the conversation that our, uh, teachers were engaged in, in, uh, assessing, uh, what resources were going to help to do that, uh, resources that were going to include that information so that we were not having to individually, because that was really what specifically we, the initial conversation we had at the elementary level is that, that's what we were finding. Our, our resource was so outdated, that, uh, there was a lot of supplementing going on, and that supplementing wasn't consistent across our system. So, uh, this, this stool, and, and you might recall, um, for those of you that were on the board, and, uh, those of you that might have been watching our earlier presentations, uh, one of our colleagues from, uh, the Teaching and Learning Department, Gwen Molden, when we adopted the, um, elementary, uh, curriculum, I recall her, um, talking about, uh, those components of, uh, the Bridges curriculum, and what it provided for us. And likewise, uh, as we went into the CPM adoption, that was the, uh, consensus from our teachers as well. So, uh, again, coming back to, um, our implementation process, and we are in year two, uh, of our elementary implementation, and in year, uh, one of our middle school implementation, and as such, we have been engaged in, uh, evaluating how that is going. And one of the things that we did, we, and again, we talked earlier, uh, Director Zombush talked about, uh, implementation science. It was a part of, uh, her slide, and about the three-year implementation science. And we talked about, um, and we have in the past, talked about, uh, making sure that at different checkpoints along the way of that implementation, we're gathering different data around our implementation to see its effectiveness. And so specifically at the K-five level, this past, uh, we started it right before winter break, and then into early and mid-January, uh, did some K-five math, uh, visits. And just to see how our implementation was going, how, uh, what were the challenges that our teachers were facing, and we did this across our system, across grade levels, and gathered that data. And the purpose of that was to truly help inform our future, uh, professional development activities, our future staff meetings, for example. Uh, we brought that data and shared that at each individual building level, uh, with the, with the administrative team there, to help them inform their built conversations for the rest of this year, and moving into their building instructional leadership team conversations. And so that's where we focused our implementation check, uh, at the elementary level. In addition to that, at the middle school level, we also had those conversations with our staff, uh, multiple times, we have been, um, throughout this year, and year one of implementation. But at the, uh, right at the midpoint of this year, uh, we did a math survey out to our students and our parents, uh, of students, uh, that were engaged in our courses, that were using CPM as the instructional resource, uh, as the curricular resource, and we also sent the parent guardian survey out. And you can see there, um, what, what we received in that, uh, bit of feedback. Um, and we wanted to highlight here, just some of the, uh, initial, uh, feedback. We're continuing to evaluate this data set, and we will continue to evaluate this data set with our staff, uh, to continue to program forward and to make decisions about, uh, what adjustments we need to make in our implementation, where we need to provide, um, a deeper experience for our staff, and ultimately for our students, in utilizing the new resources. Again, getting back to that alignment of having those daily experiences with content that is rigorous, aligned to the standards, that students have that experience, so they don't get to the test and say, I've never seen something as complicated as this. Um, and, and that is really the work that we're engaged in. You can see, um, the, the strength of our teaching staff was noted, um, time and time again, in our, uh, responses, both from our students and our parents. Our teachers have done a phenomenal job, I think, both in the case of our Bridges, uh, curriculum, as well as our use of the resource of CPM at the middle school level. We've had very strong, um, professional development experience for all of our staff, uh, in both cases, starting the summer before implementation and ongoing throughout the school year. And, uh, actually, we're coming up on, uh, visits at the middle school level with the, uh, person who, you know, works with our teachers, and giving feedback on, uh, their instructional practices, and answering questions for them about, as they are becoming, uh, more familiar with the resource, they're, you know, as you do it the first year, you're learning as you go. And, uh, giving them an opportunity to engage with the representative to help them, uh, better access the resource has been key. You also see, uh, that the challenges, um, uh, we were encouraged in the student results to see group work and collaboration be, uh, something that students have found value in. I think the Teaching and Learning Committee found value last week, when we presented some seventh grade, uh, problems and, and, uh, the, the difficulty and complexity. Um, but we also are seeing the challenges of some, uh, stress. I think we talked about a healthy, uh, there was a lot of conversation, if you go back into our presentation, at the Teaching and Learning Committee, about what is that healthy, uh, dissonance that students need to, uh, wrestle with as they are, uh, attacking new content and material. So those are our challenges that we need to continue to work, uh, to meet the needs of our students. And then you can see, uh, also, uh, parents reporting improved math confidence. I think, uh, if we take you back to our, uh, vision statement, which in hindsight probably should have included in this, uh, presentation, but, uh, math identity and students seeing themselves as mathematicians was one of the key focuses that our staff engaged in as we looked at new resources. We wanted our students to, all students to see themselves as mathematicians that can do complex problems, and have the confidence to do so. So, um, we definitely appreciate that, uh, that's been reported as, uh, something that's parents, those that, uh, some of the parents that, uh, completed our, uh, feedback, said they're seeing that from their, uh, son or daughter at home. And then, um, again, we see the commonality of the, uh, math anxiety and students having, uh, the difficulty and the challenges with the new, uh, resource that we're utilizing. Uh, we're not fully surprised, uh, that there are those challenges, and we need to identify strategies to work through, um, the difference in approach, uh, in terms of homework, uh, and problems. Uh, definitely homework, uh, and work completion is a common, uh, challenge for middle school students, I will say. Um, not new to this implementation, um, and so not fully surprised, uh, by that, but definitely continuing to work through that with our students. We were going to have this, uh, opportunity to, uh, engage you in reflective, uh, thinking. Uh, just curious, if you take a moment, uh, to reflect about, through this experience that you've had, albeit brief, not as long as the ninety-minute experience we took our Teaching and Learning Committee, uh, through last week, but I'd like to give you a chance to just pause for a moment, and what did you used to think about math? And the new standards, and the new approaches, uh, as compared to what you think today? Or now?
Um, I can, so, um, first of all, I love the new way of teaching and learning. Um, um, I do other things outside of being a school board member, obviously, and one of them is involved in the National STEM. And one of the struggles that we've had is the seventy percent dropout rate, uh, of kids taking hard sciences and math as they go into post-secondary ed, uh, simply because they hit that wall, that's what we used to call it. You know, without the constant learning about how to apply it and the experiential learning, they were memorizing, and they realized they didn't really understand the concepts. They would jump over to the next highest level skill that depended on them having an in-depth knowledge of those concepts. And then they would all of a sudden think they were not good at math. They weren't good at science, they weren't good at that. And, um, I'm hoping that this new method of training, and what I've seen in the classrooms, is going to help with that quite a bit. Um, because I used to think that, you know, the, the rote memorization and the repetition and stuff like that, um, you know, was the only real way to teach it in, uh, middle school and elementary, and clearly, um, we have made massive improvements on that, and also enhanced, you know, y- you know, so many decades ago, being in algebra in high school, used to be the pinnacle, and you would only take calculus in college, and now it's algebra by eighth grade, we're asking them to learn that much faster, but we haven't really changed our tools or methodologies of how to learn. And, uh, just doing the same thing faster, uh, obviously wasn't working. So, um, um, as far as the MCAs goes, and how they're actually testing in the last year or so, um, including this year and the new way, um, I'm hoping that we can actually change that trajectory.
Anyone?
I have so many thoughts. I'm going to share a couple. So, it's not a really, like, now I think, I used to think. Um, what keeps swirling around my head is, as, as everything that has been presented, I think it's really, uh, we have to be very careful about making assumptions. Uh, we have to be very careful, I, I wrote, like, making broad statements, um, from something that maybe you don't truly understand, it, it is, it's not serving, it's not wise, I guess. Um, and so I just think of, you know, when the Bridge, the Bridges curriculum for the elementary school was being, um, piloted, I went, or maybe it was the first year of implementation, and I went to a couple of the math nights, and I thought, oh my gosh, I, for, you know, it was like a three-hour night, and I thought, in the beginning, I was like, oh my gosh, I don't get any of this, because it was so different from any way that I ever learned. And then, I, I'm a note taker, so I took like five pages of notes, and by the end, I had to, I had to connect with, um, I think it was Jennifer Molitor that evening, and Principal Molitor, and I was like, is my, like, I feel like this is allowing for such a deeper understanding for a broad level. And she said, that is exactly what we're trying to do. And so while, um, I am very far, I've never been an educator, I never will, probably will be an educator, other than being a parent, so I guess I'm a little bit of an educator. Um, I just really appreciate being taken through this. Um, I think there's been a lot of concern, and I think that we have to, we have to allow for this role, we ha, we have to allow for it, the, so, I don't know, I, I think that, again, I have so many thoughts, but the biggest thing is, is like, it's just, we have to be very careful about making assumptions or broad statements, um, because they just lead to fear. And, um, yeah, that's my...
Do you have something you want to say?
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to say that I love how you're putting so much emphasis on the, like, confidence, and like the stress levels, because I've seen so many of my peers and myself struggle, um, with like, just like knowing that, oh, we're not a math person, we haven't done well in math, so we're just, we can't do math, but now maybe I can do math. And I love the way you presented it, it felt like I was in a classroom, that was fun.
Well, uh, Mrs. Maloney has to take credit for that, thank you.
Um, I would just, I have a question. Can you go back to the slide with the stool on it, please? So my question slash concern is, the word concepts is mentioned multiple times on this slide. Students identify the appropriate concepts. Um, and then we go down in conceptual understanding. Um, my question slash concern is that if this math vision was built in twenty-one, twenty-two, previous to the strategic plan being finalized in, um, July of last year, where we really did hear a very light, loud, loud cry from our community, that our students, they want to see them, um, receive, you know, curriculum that's rigorous and challenging and relevant, and I think they want to learn a little content, where, um, this slide really talks about concepts. And I know that this curriculum also talks about concepts. So how are we infusing that fun foundational content into this curriculum, so that we can ensure that when our students are going through our math pathways, that they are set up for success as they graduate? Because an, an electrical engineer, um, has to know the content, you know? A medical doctor has to know the content, and I know, and not every student is going to be, I mean, I understand there are people who struggle and all that. So, how, we, how are we infusing content into this?
Yeah, and this actually, the stool wasn't part of our math vision, I think there's a lot of connections, but the stool is actually from MDE. So I, uh, there's an online webinar, I can send you the link, where they're talking through, like, what is the definition of mathematical rigor, and how do we help support kids, so that when, I'm hoping I can get to here, how, how do they get to that advanced level, or how do they get to that exceeds level? And so they were really talking through that, like, absolutely, I think where you got the content come in, sorry, I'm clicking it this one, because I was told I had to for the public or something, um, this one, this is like, this is where I think those concepts come into play. They're talking about, like, or the content, excuse me, the content comes into play probably more here, is what I'm imagining, right? Because that is like your computational fluency, right? I need to know my math facts, you are hundred percent correct. And we want to make sure that kids, I think to the point of others that he, we're talking through, like, I need to understand why that works, and be able to draw that model. Again, if you go back to the example, and I should have left the exceeds one on there, now I'm regretting my decision to chop something. Um, he told me I had to. Um, so, so, so the advanced one, and I can send it to you all, or I can put it in the PDF, I'm going to send you, the advanced one was really about that fractional model. Um, and I think that that gets to the point of like, certainly that bottom part, right, that conceptual understanding, how, how to draw that model. Um, I think what I see in the application part, is every single one of those questions was a real-life application, right? So how do you take what you know about fractions and equivalent fractions and things like that without standard? And how do you apply that in a way that isn't a multiple choice question? And actually, like, almost every single one, when you look at them, I mean, some of the released examples, I'll tell you, are better than others. I like some of them better than others, it's not a perfect system. Um, if you look at the science ones, just an aside, sorry, I'm on timeline here, just an aside, the science ones, um, the science MCAs this year are going to be more about the experiences, where it's almost like they'll simulate a, a, a science experiment, and kids have to decipher the data that's collected through that experiment. So the ones that are released for MCAs, um, for science, aren't going to, they don't have that interactivity yet built onto that testing one, two, three website. Um, but to answer your point, I think it's both. Um, and this, with this definition wasn't necessarily our, we should have put the math vision in there, it wasn't the math vision. And actually, I think to your point, I think revisiting that math vision with this new lens of how we're defining academic excellence, like, I, I think there's a... lens of how we're defining academic excellence, like, I, I think there's a lot in here, like, this is just around rigor. Let's talk about some of the other words here. I think that could be a whole nother session. But yeah, I think this was the definition that MDE gave on it and just talked through, like, if you don't have one of those legs, it's really not a sturdy stool. And that was how their analogy went through about defining mathematical rigor. And I thought it was relevant to our conversation around rigor in our district.
Yeah. And I think if you, you know, it takes six tenths, if you don't know how to divide six by two, you're not going to get to the answer of three fifths.
For sure. That, that's that foundational content.
Yep, for sure. And if you don't know the model that goes with that, you're also never going to be able to do the exceeds.
Uh huh. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, so I got to spend some time in a Sage class where they did some math. One of the things with them is that they are restricted to Bridges-only math. And that was a concern to the individual teacher because a lot of those, well, all of those students are advanced and she is supplementing, so this is a statement to a question that also ties in with, with CPM and some, some things that I have also heard with teachers doing modifications. So is that something that is still ongoing within the curriculum? Is that something you're experiencing? Is that something you're working through? Is that normal? Is that part of the dip? Just trying to work through that.
Yeah, and I think.
Want to take the first part?
Sure, I'll take the first part. I don't remember what the first part was, but I'll say something.
Sage.
Yeah, so thinking about, we have a few friends, if, if I'm thinking about, like, we have kids that are taking middle school math as Sage students. So we have students that are coming over after first hour in math. So we definitely do always use the acceleration policy when it makes sense, right? And we've taken the number of kids through that process to see, like, yeah, are you ready for something more? I mean, I have a current kindergartner that I'm assessing right now to think about where his right level of placement is. So that's always an option. It's very, like, right, I think about, like, our switch when we decided to say, not every single kid, just because you're identified from a COGAT score means that you're ready for or needing a whole grade level advancement right now. Not to say never, right? But it didn't make sense for all of those learners in that space. I would say, though, really interesting, it, it kind of like perplexed a lot of people, but it was an interesting conversation. We also saw the biggest growth we've seen in that Sage classroom over the past three years was when they stayed on content, stayed on grade level content, but got the opportunity to go really deep. So it's kind of confusing, right? Because you're like, wait, how are you actually growing more by staying on this grade level but going deep versus accelerating, I think somebody alluded to it, like, at a fairly surface level? Sometimes kids need that acceleration, for sure. We, I mean, we're a state, we need to have an acceleration policy. You have a school board policy, you're on acceleration, and I follow the process. So certainly, that's always an option on the table for students when that makes sense, given where they're at, but not every single student in that space necessarily. You can be gifted and maybe right now, your math skills don't show you need that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I'll take the second question related to CPM and, and middle school. And the word you used, was it modifications?
Yes.
Yep.
Supplementation is probably a better word.
Sure. Yep, and, and certainly that is, those are conversations that we are deeply engaged in with our by, by grade level teams, learning teams. And our peer coach is working, we have one, the one, one of our peer coaches is working with the middle school math teachers through this implementation, engaging in what are those necessary adjustments that we're considering and needing to make. Gwen Molden is also working with that, those teams of teachers. And that is part of the process of a new implementation, finding what are those adjustments that are appropriate and collectively as a group of sixth-grade teachers or seventh-grade teachers or eighth-grade teachers, going through that process while still maintaining the level of rigor that's intended. And part of, because of the nature of this curriculum, that, this resource that we're using in CPM and the, the, the point that certain concepts are hit multiple times, most concepts are hit multiple times throughout the year, making modifications prematurely is something we're trying to be careful not to do until we've been through the whole series of Course 1 at sixth grade, Course 2 at seventh, Course 3 at eighth grade, so that we know the whole sequence of course before we, and see, and I, and I think a lot of our staff are seeing this and students are seeing this as well and reporting to their teachers, that things that they see early on, they see it again. They see it three times, maybe four times throughout the course, or maybe even more throughout the course of, of the school year. And so we have to be mindful not to make unnecessary adjustments prematurely. And I think that's a balancing act that we're going through in this first year of implementation, and that we'll continue to reflect upon and take the feedback, once again, that feedback that we got from our students and our parents, and make those necessary adjustments.
Director Johnson, I'll just close by saying that there isn't, there is no perfect curriculum. Curriculum is written at a national level, kind of to that bell of the curve, if you will. And even curriculum that we might have had for four or five years, if you get a cohort of kids that just push things or their learning is in a, in a space that you need to bring in a supplement that historically you never have had to do, that's just what good teaching is. So we're always going to find ways to supplement based upon who's before me today that might look drastically different than who I might have had as, you know, in my class last year. So, so yeah, I think that's a very well point, a well-made point. And then even in the long run, we will continually be supplementing and maybe making modifications based upon that, you know, learner profile changing or the relevance of the kids' needs that, that particular year.
Sure. Thank you. One other question. So just looking at the enrollment and your total number of surveyors. I'm going to call Directors, I'm Bush up here on this.
She's done some deep.
The, the remaining number of middle schoolers. Can you, are all of those the eighth graders that are in advanced math? Or where are the remaining?
You're talking about the pers, the survey response rate for students?
No, no.
Students who were not given.
The, the students who were not given the survey.
Okay, what's, so what's the question?
So you, so 1,686 students.
Yep.
Were given the survey.
Mm-hmm.
There were 2,086 sixth through eighth graders?
Right. So the 1,686 is only students who are currently in a CPM class.
Correct.
That's not everybody in the middle school.
Okay.
Yep. So the advanced math is not a CPM class.
Correct. So the, so the remaining are all eighth grade advanced math. Is that correct?
There's also like sped kiddos.
Special ed. Okay. That's, that's just the remaining?
Correct.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question about the implementation data. So thank you for sharing this. I think it's really hard to, to assess from this feedback whether it was, like, overwhelmingly positive or negative. Are we able to get as board members, like, the full survey results and comments?
I can give, so the, the slide that was given, it was a very quick weekend turnaround time, so I didn't have a chance to, like, fully dive deep, but I do have that here tonight. Just wanted to put forth that our response rate for parents, I looked at, there was a question at the Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee about how many households it rep, or how many, yeah, how many households the respondents represented. I did that analysis and that would be 11%. So our, our parents that responded to this represent 11% of the households of CPM students. So that's something to keep in mind. In terms of the student data, the top, so the, the numbers are not going to add up to the 1,686 because there's a lot of answers that didn't fall, I mean, students responded a lot, like, I like decimals, I like unit six. So there's not, thematically, this isn't going to add up, so yeah, don't try to do that. I mean, you can try and do it, but it's not going to add up.
Yeah, no.
But for student data, the number one is teacher support. So that was 151 students that said that that was their, a positive. I, I also have a description and example response for each. The second one was 88 responses. That was collaboration and group work. The third one was ease of learning, 77. 67 is the next one. They said that the thing that they like is the challenge level as a positive. 33 students, interactive activities. And then for challenges for students, homework and prac, homework struggles and stress, that would be the top one at 234. Test and assessment stress at 130. Fractions and decimals, 105. Understanding concepts, 91. Algebra and equations, 46.
You don't need to go through a model today.
Okay, so I have all of them.
If you want to just send them, that's perfect.
Um, yeah, so I have that broken down for each of the questions and each of the response groups. But yes, in general, like, for the parent one, that, I know that that's come up a lot. The strong teacher support, that was 67 responses. The top challenge was 25 responses. So the number of responses in terms of the top challenges was less than half of the top in terms of the positive responses. And again, that only represents 11% of the CPM families.
Director Zombus, have we ever, before CPM, did we ever do a survey like this? For Bridges?
I was actually going to ask for Bridges, if we could.
Yeah, I, I think the level of feedback that, and the process, frankly, we, we have made significant changes to our implementation process with curriculum in, in recent years and the steps along the way. This being one of those steps that previously to this level, I mean, we, we've always surveyed our families about experience at the end of the, you know, at this time of the year. We're, we're doing that right now. We've done that historically for many years. But specific to curriculum implementation, this is not something that we had previously engaged in.
So I guess my question would be, is we don't know homework and stress and test anxiety prior, so we don't have a baseline to compare it to.
That, that would be a good point. Yes, I would agree with that statement.
I think as parents, as we take surveys, though, we know what it felt like two years ago before today, right? So, you know, I, I, having kids this age, will be very blunt to say that my feedback is not very positive and I know that this works well for many students, for some, it does not. And so, you know, I don't find it challenging and rigorous. So when I think of rigor, I think of, like, repetition and, you know, having homeworks at home and the responsibility of returning it. And I don't think I've seen homework for two years in math. So I guess, you know, that I'm curious, just the general tone of, of the feedback and, and just, I've heard overwhelmingly not as positive, maybe, but maybe that's just my circle of contacts. I'm not sure.
We can provide the data sets, so you can take a look at some of them.
Yeah.
But that will come into the whole board?
If that's the will of the board.
I would like to see that as well. And I will just, and I would just add, I'm going to be real brief here. There is no denying, there's a level of frustration, right? And I understand that the implementation takes time. But I think, given the fact that the board approved the math pathways prior to our new strategic plan being implemented and prior to even knowing that we are implementing the CPM curriculum, I'd like to make a motion this evening to bring the math pathways to our March study session so that we can discuss, the math pathways were approved in December 11th of 2023. But it'll allow us to take a deeper dive into this conversation of math and to really determine if the math pathways are doing what they're intended to do to inspire empowering each student to reach their full potential in math. And our community has expressed a concern about this topic, and I think it deserves further, further explor- exploration, to ensure that our curriculum meets the needs of students at all levels of the math spectrum and that each learner receives the foundational skills necessary to succeed in high school. That's my motion. Can I get a second?
I second that.
So to simplify my motion, is I'm making a motion to bring the math pathways to the March study session.
And you said it was, um, the math.
The pathways was approved December 11th of 2023.
December 11th, 2023.
Prior to our new strategic plan, which was implemented.
July of '24.
July of '24, correct.
But we were. So you're making a motion to bring this to the.
We'll discuss.
To the, our next study session, the math pathways conversation, which is really is a conversation about bringing, looking at advanced math. Because the math pathways, we, by redoing the math pathways in December 2020, December 11th, 2023, we dropped off the sixth grade advanced math and the seventh grade advanced math. So I think, given the fact that our strategic plan focuses on rigor and relevant instruction, challenging and rigorous and relevant instruction, I'd like to bring back and have that conversation at a study session.
And we have a, you simplify your motion, so do we still have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. And this is to Dr. Edwards. I know that we had discussion about Sage and the concerns about Sage, and we kind of heard that. And we've also discussed the fact that we're in the first year, really full year of implementation. And I do believe in the 2023, '24 school years when we're piloting CPM. So I, I, I struggle to see or to understand if there's enough data, or even in the first year or so, that we could have a more in-depth discussion before the data and the actual impact of that is, is felt. I, I don't, I, I, I would be, my concern is, is it would be premature because I'm not sure how much we know. And we also, you know, obviously know that the, the feedback from the teachers, that was overwhelmingly accepted, 100% of the board voted and it was to discuss the teaching, learning of the why. And I don't know if we've had enough time to digest that. So I would be cautious of, again, relitigating something without data, and that's my concern. And I'm not sure how the, your department would be able, I, I don't know what we would do.
I think the point would be to take a deeper dive into FASB scores and separate the advanced students from the regular students and to really look and compare, like, are we meeting their needs this year versus last year? There's been a loud cry from the communities, particularly around advanced math. We do have a new board, we have new information, and we have a new strategic plan. And in order to possibly make a change for the following school year, the time to have the conversation is now.
I think that's passed, but. I, I, I just question. I, I.
Excuse me?
Could you please answer the, the data question?
Yeah, so first, one response would be the anecdotal data at this stage that we're hearing from our teachers as we look at where our students are at, at the mid-year point, in addition to the standardized data collected via FastBridge, is, and this was a question that was posed at a Teaching and Learning in February prior to our presentation at March meeting regarding looking at student grades. The feedback that our teachers have given is that they're, what they're seeing collectively is that student grades, as they see them, are actually more indicative of, and a more accurate predictor of where students are actually at in their understanding of math concepts, and especially to the presentation content earlier this evening. A more accurate description of student attainment of math skills as opposed, so in previous, dare I say, grades might not have been an accurate predictor because our proficiency scores, if MCA being the summative measure, our teachers have reported that it's actually a greater predictor now with utilizing the new resource of where. with utilizing the new resource of where students' understanding is of math concepts.
So I'm not quite sure if that answered my question.
So, so, well, uh, you were, you were going to a place of, do we need more data?
Okay.
I think MCA data this spring.
Uh-huh.
And an opportunity to look at that data uh as a data set to do analysis. Um, once again, this is year one of implementation. Um, I would caution the level to which we would analyze that data. Um, but again, uh, there's multiple sets of data. Student grades are one set of data, uh, FastBridge scores, another set of data, MCA triangulation of all of that data. And I happen to name three different data sets. There are other data sets as well um that we could examine. So I I think that 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 would be my attempt to answer your question. I think I would tend to agree that we need more data before we would engage in that, but.
So I think the ask is maybe just to revisit the conversation and and talk about what data maybe could we use? So can we use grades and look at those? Or can we, you know, what other options are there? Can we look at the number of students that are opting out? And that might be enough to fill a classroom. Um, I think there's a lot of factors, and that would be the discussion I would love to have. Personally, I think asking our parents and our community to wait three years when they're extremely frustrated and these are kiddos that already lost two years from COVID and now asking them to wait three years, or seventh graders who have had four different curriculums now in math. Um, that's very frustrating as a parent. So I I think it is, you know, our duty as board members to consider the feedback that we've gotten.
Can I ask a clarifying question on this? Um, are you, are you proposing looking at taking the quote-unquote highest students, putting them in a separate class and giving them the same resource? I'm struggling to understand what the ask is in terms of advanced math.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Like, because there, we have the resource. So are you talking about just pulling the kids that are doing the best in that class and putting them in a separate class?
I think we need more data, which is why I'd like to go to, go this, have this go to a study session, really focused on those math pathways. Meaning like, if you take your sixth grade advanced, if you take your fifth, if you take your sixth grade cohort and there was a hundred advanced kids last year in the sixth grade advanced class, is my understanding. Now they're in seventh grade CPM with no advanced math, is my understanding. So how are they performing? Are we meeting their needs? Or do we need to go back and look at adding or revising a seventh grade advanced math? Um, uh, adding a class? I mean, we have twenty-three students opting out of CPM right now. We're losing money in our district. And and we have many students, many parents who are paying for math tutors, and we're losing kids because we don't have advanced math options. And so I think it even makes more sense, given the fact that we did decide to keep Sage Sage in play in third, fourth, and fifth grade. Um, it it, I think it even makes more sense for those kids coming out of Sage to have those advanced math learning options as they come into the middle school. So new board, new strategic plan. Um, I I think it's really relevant to bring it to a study session to have a conversation.
I I hear your question. I'm just wondering what it, are you suggesting a to, like, we have a resource that is CPM. So are you suggesting taking, we would have a regular CPM and advanced CPM that would be the same cur- it's still the same, it is our curricular resource. So I'm, I, can you clarify what an advanced would look like within our curricular resources?
Actually, actually, that's, I'm gonna, if I may, just hold on that question. Uh, what I'm trying to understand is the discussion, the requ- the motion on the table is to bring back a discussion about math pathways.
Correct.
Meaning um students who are accessing regular curriculum versus advanced curriculum. I'm just trying to whittle it down to try to get an understanding of what the ask on the table is.
And what we're offering.
And what we're offering in the pathways.
For each.
Are we, are we teaching those foundational skills? Is the path that we put in place meeting those foundational skills to set these students up for success?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So um, Dr. Edwards, correct me if I'm wrong. After this year, there is no more advanced math. There will no longer be advanced math in the middle school. Is that correct?
Uh, the pathways begin in, that that's being referred to, begin in eighth grade. Students will make a choice in eighth grade.
So will only be in eighth grade?
Yep.
Okay, so, and Director Atkinson, you're, what you're saying is to essentially be able to offer an advanced, right? So, for example, Sage students, right, we talked a little bit about Sage, right? If those students wanted to choose an advanced, just saying CPM, I understand. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, they don't have an advanced curriculum, so maybe we go back to last year's.
They have great advancement.
Just, just.
They have acceleration.
Accelerate, so to meet the rigor because they already know it, we advance them up um in the curriculum.
So.
So that exists currently today.
So say we.
For the Sage kids.
Advance, advance.
For any student, yeah, for any student.
Okay, so say we just automatically.
So that that's, I'm trying to understand what we're, getting back to Dr. Zombush's question, what, what exactly? It's. If we bring it to the, I know the motion on the table is to bring it to a study session, and we can discuss whether or not that's, that's warranted or not. But to to what end? Is it advanced CPM? Is it a different, is it a different?
There is no advanced CPM, yeah.
Well, but, but the CPM is our curriculum. So you're talking about a completely separate curriculum?
That's the discussion we would like to have. We would like to understand different options for kids that are advanced in fifth, sixth, and seventh grade because we've taken away those options.
Right, and we do have advanced classes in other subject matters. And so we have a, we have a strategic plan that says we're going to focus on challenging, rigorous, and relevant instruction. We've heard a multitude of complaints or concerns from parents um regarding their challenges with the CPM curriculum. And I just think we need to take a deeper dive into the data to really understand um if we were to bring back the sixth grade advanced math, would that help to meet the needs of our most advanced learners? Um, would that help to level out the playing field of meeting these ner- needs? I mean, I I feel like we're getting too far into the conversation, which is why I'd like to have the conversation. Um, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we're just trying to get clarity on what to, what the conversation ask is.
Yeah, that's the ask.
So, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but in in two weeks, what, what kind of data will we have that we don't have today? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think if we can take a deeper dive into the FastBridge scores, I think if we, we have data there to support that, right? I mean, we have FASB scores from last year, we have FASB scores from this year. Mm-hmm. I mean, if someone can come up and tell me that every student, every advanced student in sixth is now in seventh grade, regular CPM, they're thriving, and they're at the highest level of their class, then we're good. Like, we're meeting their needs. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and just for some context, so the current fifth graders, we do, we did last year, and we're going to do again this spring, is a universal consideration for acceleration. So it's not like you have to know about that option as a parent, right? So we look at all those, I think to your point, we look at all those FastBridge scores. For our acceleration process, there is a certain threshold. There's a certain cut score, right, we're looking for. Um, we did this last spring. We're going to do it again this spring. We've just recently pulled the data of all those fifth graders. And then my communication goes out to them saying, we have a couple of options, and I want to make sure that you know about those options. Um, and so we did that last year. We tested, I tested a lot of kids. I don't remember how many. Um, I tested a lot of kids, and there are some that qualified for that acceleration. So we are universally considering, especially that, like, that moving point, right? That that natural progression from fifth grade to sixth grade. So that's already something that was in the works last year. It's going to continue this spring, too.
My understanding is there's not an advanced option for our Sage kids, though. Correct?
So those kids are considered, just like anybody else would be. So all fifth graders, now with the exception of the couple that are already in middle school math, right? Like, I mean, they're already advanced. Certainly, they can, we've had double acceleration before. That's, that's a thing. If if that makes sense for them, right?
Still an option.
But it's still an option, right? Um, but we are, we will send the communication, just like we did last spring, of all the kids, Sage or otherwise. Um, because there's a lot of families, too, that are selecting to stay in their homeschool for a variety of reasons or our choice program, the immersion program, right? So like, we don't want to say it's just for, just like we talked about before. Not every single student in Sage does this make sense for in that moment. Um, but yeah, we we can universally consider everybody.
Where is that on the pathways, like, chart? I don't have it in front of me, but that math pathways chart for next year, it doesn't show anything advanced for sixth graders or in them.
Like, part of, this wouldn't be considered for an advanced course. This is for our acceleration process. But I don't want families to, like, only know about it if they know about it. You know what I mean? It's like, we universally consider everybody. Now, certainly, that's a conversation because not all families will say, yes, please send my kids to the middle school and and bump them up a grade, you know, like, not everybody is interested in that. Um, but certainly, we universally consider everybody.
Yeah, it's an advanced, it's an advanced pathway. It's not, it's no longer a course, and I think maybe that's where we're interchanging some language here. But per policy, um, if a student i- is eligible for that advanced pathway, I'm a fifth grader, and I might go into seventh grade math versus sixth grade math, right? That's something that I can still consider. That that option has never gone away. That's something that we discussed back in December um of twenty-three, when we talked about these pathway changes. So, so I'm just, which is why I'm just trying to get clear um what.
Dr. Thomas, we had that policy in place. We've had that policy, five thirteen, I think it is. We've had it in place for years. I'm saying that's not working right now. That's, that's the part that we're hearing loud and clear from the community. And and so.
The, I'm sorry, the policy.
They're either not utilizing it, they're not being tested for, I don't know, the the behind the scenes. We, as the board, are just the what and the why, and I'm saying, what are we doing to meet the needs of all learners? We have a new strategic plan in place. And why are we hearing so many concerns um from parents about this, the middle school curriculum? Could it be tied back to the fact that we don't have advanced math in sixth and seventh? And if we were to put that back in place, would that solve this problem? That's the conversation I want to have, and I'd like some data to support that. How we do that, that's really administration's job to figure out.
So we did talk about the fidelity of the math program and the Sage program. Uh, was it January or February? I can't remember, uh, in the study session, uh, where we did talk about that a little bit.
No.
Um, but I.
No, I got voted down on that.
I got to, um, I have to ask that this is a decision that I would think would be between the parents and the teachers, the principal, the head of that department. Um, if the parent thinks the child qualifies, and they do qualify. But part of the problem we had before, and probably, and the reason why Sage fifth grade is doing more in-depth bridges is is to, is to really try to have some heart into the fidelity of the advanced as well as the, what we're calling gifted and talented. Uh, but also, the acceleration, I believe, was already talked about, and that's why I'm confused of what, what, you know, what is the outcome of it? And then again, do we have the data now that we've, we're still only in the first year? And we have advanced eighth grade, and we we don't have that data yet, so I'm.
So if I'm thinking about this properly, because we still have advanced in eighth grade, our sixth graders were in fifth grade last year. So are we only talking about current seventh graders that are, that are, uh, may maybe at one point had an advanced option that was taken away?
And sixth grade. We had a hundred sixth grade advanced math kids last year.
Right, but they're in seventh grade this year.
Correct.
So I'm I'm trying to break this down into the smallest cohort possible, that if, if we're requesting you to take a dive into how it's affecting a cohort of students.
I think that'd be the easiest one to look at.
What cohort is it? Because it's not eighth grade, because they're, they currently have the option. Well, it's not sixth grade because they were in fifth grade last year. So it's really only this year's seventh graders.
Except for the Sage kids.
The Sage children.
With all those other factors built in.
It's about a hundred and fifty kids, basically.
So that's what I'm wondering is, would it be possible for you to break that small cohort out, cohort out of current seventh graders and have any kind of data that would be helpful to us um to be able to compare their experiences from last year to this year?
If I may be. Yep, I think I am tracking, uh, and if I may be so bold, is to say, if we bring it to the March study session, that would require us to collect that data between now and next week. And that would be a fairly significant, and frankly, here tonight, I don't have real ideas necessarily yet um about what that data would be, um, that we would bring back to you uh as early as a March study session. Might we be able to bring some data, if that were the will of the board, to an April study session, for example? Um, to, to strategize, what data could we bring? Um, we won't have MCA data uh available to us because that just actually happens in April, when we come back from spring break. Um, again, I shared earlier, we have some anecdotal data and observational data. Um, we would have, the first data set that comes to mind is we have registration data from the students, how many sections of students are in seventh grade going to eighth grade next year? I don't know the answer to this question here tonight. Um, how many of those students uh and families have chosen that path? And comparing it to those that were in sixth grade, had an experience, and now are choosing that path in eighth grade um to go on the advanced pathway that they have the opportunity to do. That's data that we could probably pull together to inform a a a brief conversation. I don't know that we could have an in-depth conversation that would be a triangulation of multiple data sets.
I think if we had the number of students in fifth, sixth, seventh grade that we're testing over, is it ninety percent typically that's offered for advanced courses? Because I have not gotten that feedback from the Sage parents or from, we've gotten several emails from parents and and a lot of communication from parents whose children are testing over that advanced threshold that we use for every other topic. But we're, we don't have available for math. And if you look at the middle school registration, there's no middle school advanced math offering for those students. So I'm not sure where the miscommunication is when we're saying, yes, we offer it, but we don't. Um, that's the feedback that I've heard. They're not being offered it for the kids that are testing over ninety, I believe it's ninety percent, correct me? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I just want to see if I heard you correctly. You're saying those families are reporting to you that they aren't being offered the advanced pathway to accelerate.
Because there is no advanced.
They're not, there's no course.
Right.
But they are being offered the advanced learning pathway to basically grade skip, which is essentially a new course for them.
I have not heard that from Sage parents. In fact, many are looking at alternative options. So maybe it's a miscommunication. Uh, I'm curious now, but um.
So one of the data sets that I, as as I'm listening to this conversation, that I have not heard reported to me from Mr. Kabushak is um what the conversations, I know that Mr. Kabushak, a number was, was brought forward into this conversation of the families who are choosing to not have their student enrolled. That is twenty-three students, which is one percent of our eligible students for that. Um, and Mr. Kabushak has had conversations with each of those families. I have not heard him report, and I will follow up with him uh to find out uh what level of conversation this has been at, at the middle school level. That would be one additional piece of data that we could bring forward, uh, should that be the desire. But again, aside from that, I don't know that we would have necessarily comprehensive uh data set to bring forward beyond that at this point. You had a comment you wanted to share.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, so when I'm pulling those, like, fifth graders, like we did last year.
Yeah.
That threshold is at the ninety-eighth percentile.
Yeah.
So not ninetieth. Um, and that communication has not gone out yet to those families, and so that might be why.
It has for other topics, for other.
Yeah, 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 yep. So I'm thinking, like, for the, like, right, like, you might be eligible, and let's talk about, let's have the conversation around what that might look like.
They've gotten letters for English, for Minnesota Studies, for science, just not math, then, you're saying?
Right, because this is a different type of pathway, right? This is like, thinking about ensuring that everybody knows that acceleration might be an option for their child. And we certainly do, like, I, we accelerated a seventh grader mid-year. Um, he was very, um, it was great. It was the kid driving that. The parents are like, I don't, I don't know if this is the right move. Do you think it is? I mean, but the kid was very adamant, and the teacher supported it, and and it made sense. The data, he knew a lot. And so we, we moved him at semester break. So there's always that. So feel free to send folks that feel like they need more, you know, my way. Like, I love the conversations like that. Those are fun to have.
Yeah, because I, you know, when I think about the fam. Yeah, because I, you know, when I think about the families who have opted out, so to speak, you know, those conversations that Principal Kabushak has had at the site level, you know, if, if there are needs that we can identify for, for them, we can ex, we'll continue to explore that. But one percent of our population, you know, and I'm trying to understand and kind of truly trying to qualify, quantify, sorry, all these people. Um, and, and where those conversations are taking place at the site level, if there's, if that's not occurring, all these people coming to the board without trying to address it where it matters first, that's where I'm trying to understand like the numbers we have, I wouldn't call all those people. And I, and I'm not suggesting that that's the, the, the exact term or whatever, but who are we talking about? How many are we talking about? Because to your point, Chair White, if it's a band of, of a cohort of kids, it's not all these people. Let's have this conversation, um, to, to address that. Uh, that, so, so I'm concerned to be able to meet the, the, if this is the will of the board, to bring breadth of new data to the conversation that would satisfy what you're speaking to you tonight, honestly, before we even have a chance to have the conversation, which sounds like there might be some breaks somewhere along the line, just from our own exploration tonight at the dais. Um, so, so that, that's my concern where we, if this is the will of the board, we'll figure this out. But of what we should bring.
Chair White, um, if I can do, I, my concern, uh, my concern is when statements such as the community is, um, because I'm in contact with the community as well and I don't hear only negative. I, I actually hear overwhelmingly positive. And, um, Director Mason, you sh- you shared, you know, you didn't know if it was maybe your circle. You have a fifth grader. And I'm not saying that it is just your circle, but that is, that my concern is when there are broad statements like the community is upset about this or, or feeling challenged. And I'm not saying that I don't agree that people are challenged. I have also heard personal experiences of high, highly challenged with this new curriculum. And I, you know, I, I am sensitive to that information.
And I think we're not.
But to, to, to say that the overwhelming community response, I just, I'm out there. I'm not, I don't hear an overwhelming negative. So I'm, I'm concerned what bringing this forward in two weeks. At a, I'm, I'm concerned about, um, where it would go. I think the biggest thing when, when, you know, you talk about the twenty-three students that have opted out, I, I have been in contact with Mr. Kabushak, just checking in. I've checked in with, with parents who have opted out. Um, I, I think that, you know, we have to always encourage and remember that, um, parents to teachers, that is the, the closest proximity to student success and student achievement is in those conversations. So I'm concerned about it just being brought to board level that quickly. Especially when we're so new into the implementation of this. I, I hear the concerns about the, um, advanced uh, classes and how it looks different, but it looks different. We have a, a different curriculum. So I'm, I'm concerned about being too hasty. I'm not sure what we could accomplish talking here. I, I, I don't know.
And Director Bull and I want to be real clear with what my ask is. I'm not asking for us to vote or talk about CPM going away because I also, just like you, I'm out in the community and I do hear positive things about CPM from teachers and students. But what I'm specifically referring to are the students who are struggling on the high end of the sched, of, of the spectrum, who are specifically struggling with the fact that we have, don't have that advanced math option anymore. That's what I'm referring to. And so I want to be specifically because of our strategic plan, I want to, I thought it was relevant to bring this conversation back to have a more deep, in-depth conversation. We shouldn't even be having it here, to be honest with you. And if we're looking at a cohort of a hundred and fifty kids, pulling those fast bridge scores shouldn't take very long. I would think it'd be, we'd pretty much be able to pull the data and have the conversation in a couple of weeks and move on and decide where, how we want to move forward to meet the needs of all learners. We talk a lot about hurting the minority and the minority this or the minority that. There is a minority of students of cohorts that are not, we are not meeting their needs right now in our district.
Director Atkinson, when you share that there are students that we are not meeting their needs, my ask of you is if they're coming to you, are you asking them to reach to their teacher in their building?
Hundred percent.
Okay, because that's, I mean, that's really where the conversation has to start. And I don't, I mean.
We as a board are in charge of curriculum. That's our role. So I'm just saying, I think it's worthy of, and I'd like to hear from other board directors besides myself. And, um, i- is this the will of the board?
Can I ask, can I add a contextual piece to this? So currently we do have seventh grade advanced math. So that specific cohort that you're talking about, that would not work as a study cohort because we're phasing it out. So we do currently have seventh grade advanced math.
But they're being taught CPM.
Yes.
They're, yes, in advanced. So that's where, I'm just, logistically, the cohort, that one fifty that you're talking about specifically, they are currently in an advanced course.
Because they're all together in one class. Is that what you're saying?
They've been kept together.
They've been kept together in one class.
They're in a, yeah.
I still think it's relevant. I think it's still relevant data. So I, I think we just, at this point, I think we need to go around.
I mean, I think per Robert's rules, right? The motion was raised and we have a second, so we should.
We should, we should go forward.
And so we should. I'm really bored maybe.
One last question, because I, what I just heard is brand new to me. So there is currently an advanced seventh grade math option. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, they were in advanced as sixth graders because we previously had identified them. So they stayed in an advanced. What is true is that their resource, their curriculum, and they were a part of that s- study that we presented the data around, is our CPM resource.
And how many seventh graders are we talking about?
I think a hundred and fifty-ish would be my ballpark.
So before I call the question, what, what data does the board expect by the end of March? And is it possible to pull it together? Because I don't want, I'd rather have no information than bad information or incomplete information. I'm all about the data, but if it's not there, it'll be a, it'll be completely not productive.
Um, we can.
And, and what, so what, what questions will we be asking of these hundred and fifty cohort? I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to this. I'm just confused as to what we're going to be able to accomplish in March that we couldn't accomplish tonight. That, that's my, that's my concern.
From what I understand with your motion and what I was advocating for was to bring back the discussion around the pathways option that are provide, that are options to parents. Right now, the pathway shown on that sheet, do not show advanced math for our Sage fifth graders, sixth and seventh graders. So maybe we just need to revisit that conversation to understand truly if that's not the case. Um, so maybe that's where we just need to start.
To me, that's a different question. That, that's a, that's a clarification of what we're going to do going forward, not picking out a cohort and getting all this data that's going to take you forever and you won't be able to do it in two weeks. That I can understand.
That was my concern.
I can poll, I can poll data. I just need clarity on what I need to poll and for what purpose.
The only reason I was asking from data, because data drives decisions, right? So if it's just a conversation, I'm fine with that. And I'm more than happy to have the conversation.
I'm also happy to poll any data. I just need clarity on what you all need from.
I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing from Director Mason that she wants to know what's the plan for these.
That was my, that truly was my motion.
Uh, as opposed to, I hear you asking, how are the kids that would have been in advanced math currently doing? Two, those are two totally different asks. One seems simple enough. It's a clarification question. One seems like a deep dive that I don't know if administration can pull together an amount of data that would be helpful to us in a, in a week and a half. That, see, I'm, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, due to the timing, I think bringing just the conversation is, would be.
Maybe we start there.
We could start there, yes. Because that way then we could possibly take a deeper dive if we need to.
Director France.
I don't want to have a conversation without the data. And I don't want to have a conversation without the feedback from the teachers and them being prepped. And I'll just be honest with you, a week and a half with everything else that we got going on with the budget cuts and things like that. That's not doable to me. But I do think that we do need to revisit this. I don't believe that March is the time to do it. That's my, and, and I would like to make sure that the, um, again, the same data that was used that, which is very in-depth, with a lot of feedback from teachers on why these new pathways and why the preference to acceleration was made, needs to be the foundational piece of which we're going to pivot off of. And if we're not ready to do that, which I would assume in a week and a half, we're not going to be, that's just my feeling, then, then I would ask that we, you know, basically like we do with a lot of study sessions, say, when can you be ready? Uh, with a more robust discussion about how we're doing. If you're seeing the results you wanted to see, if you even can see the results, like I said, it's been a year. We've only removed one and we're still phasing out the other and it's our first year of CPM. So to me, that would be incomplete. But I mean, it's just that I don't want to sit here and have a discussion on something where we're just pontificating with, with no rationale, no data behind it.
Director France.
You know, that, so.
The rationale, I'm sorry, really is the rationale is that we have a new strategic plan and this, the pathway change was done before the strategic plan was put in place. And the community was loud and clear about rigorous, relevant, um, challenging instruction, which to me lends back to the advanced math conversation.
So, so I, I.
I'm not saying we ever, we never did that. So, but go ahead, Chair France, sorry.
So that, I'm going back to your question. So if, when would that be a reasonable timetable? Or even a, not, I mean, slightly unreasonable if we're not talking March.
I, I do believe we would want a data set that includes standardized assessments, MCAs, spring, um, fast bridge, uh, analysis of the first year of data, possibly grades. I mean, truly, a, a.
A year in review.
A year in review of comprehensive triangulation of multiple data sets would be, in my opinion, you're asking my opinion, the wisest thing to consider. Um, short of that comprehensive set of data, I think we are at risk of doing something that frankly, the field of education has done many years over. Try something and we walk away from it before we've actually implemented it.
And Director Edwards, are you saying that the MCA is getting the data at once because we have access to the at-once data and using that data in the spring? Because we wouldn't want to wait till the fall to get the MCA.
No, I'm not suggesting this would be a fall. Um, I also.
Because teachers do have access to it, almost instantaneously.
Correct. We could utilize, um, the data. We have to be mindful of it because of the embargoed nature of the data. We would have to be cognizant of that. So.
We're not trying to review the, the, uh, CPA results is where I'm struggling. Like, we're trying to understand the pathway options for students going into middle school, or fifth graders in Sage and students going into middle school that we don't offer. So those kids wouldn't be in CPM, most of them anyway, now. So that's, so we could use old MCA data from last year. I'm just trying to understand like how many kids would qualify on, you know, what, what are the offerings that we have for them?
And, and again, a different, uh, piece of this is, um, I think the conversation that was shared by Director Bullion and Director White, um, with regard to the amount of feedback. I, I, I don't stand here tonight before you prepared to share any of that until I would have an opportunity to engage with Mr. Kabushak at the middle school level and his staff, who have been engaged in the registration process throughout the months of January and February with families and say, how significant is this concern?
Um, I, thank you for that. Uh, thank you for bringing forth the motion. Um, I will not be supporting the, the motion as it is right now. Um, I think again, as Director Bullion, you know, stated about painting broad strokes, I don't think that's fair. Um, I, you know, we can't, unless somebody talks to every single member of this community, I, I hesitate, you know, you know, talking about the community says X or the community says Y. Um, this pathway, this particular pathway was supported by math teachers and recommended by math teachers, teaching the actual classes. Um, and so I take a lot of stock in that. I am in no way, in no way dismissing, um, family feedback on this. Positive or negative, absolutely not. And in full transparency, I have a daughter who was in the CPM pilot last year and is in, in, is in a CPM class this year as well, is an eighth grader. So I want to make that very transparent. Um, but I, I, I can't support this motion right now.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Chair White, I, I think we have, we have the motion actually, like as you discussed, as there was been two different clarif, you know, clarifications of the motion. So we need clarification of the motion in, that's my ask. What is the clarification of the motion? Because.
The motion is to bring back.
To Director Mason, it's been two different, um, it's been two different statements.
The motion is to bring back the, a conversation to our much-mart study session, session regarding math pathways. And my reason for bringing it back is because of the timing of it was previous to when our strategic plan was adopted. And we have a new strategic plan in place and the, the conversation really is centered around the strategic plan. And are we meeting the needs of all learners? That's the, the motion that's on the floor. And if we need to amend the motion, if somebody wants to amend the motion, I'm, you obviously have the right to do that. But I think we just need to go around and see if the motion has support to move forward at this point. Um, Director Olson said, you know, stated her comments and I don't know if we want to go on the table or.
Director Johnson.
Yeah, I'm in full support. That's, I'm good with that.
Director Bullion.
I do not support it. We're coming back for the March meeting.
Director France.
I do not support it. And plus, our previous strategic plan also said we are going to support all learners. So I, I don't like that even being in the motion. But no, I don't support it. I'm not going to support something based on speculation and innuendo with, with no, no full data.
And Director Mason.
Yes, I'm supportive of revisiting the pathways and.
Well, I, I would be, except it's in March. That, that part needs to be amended or I'm a no. Because we're not going to get any reasonably effective data in two weeks. That's my, that's my hangup. So if this can wait longer and somebody wants to amend it to.
So.
Be a later, a later date, you're telling me it's a full data sets May-ish? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
At, at least, at, at the earliest May to have a full, full data set.
I can amend the motion to bring math pathways conversation to our May study session.
I will second that motion.
Is there a discussion on the amendment?
I would actually say June, if they're not getting the data until May.
Heard about that.
That's just my thing. I, it just didn't, doesn't seem to make much sense if, I mean, May or June isn't going to make that much of a difference.
I don't know if we have clarity on what data we're going to get. So maybe that's the challenge. If we're waiting for this year's MCAs, which I don't think we need to wait for.
Agree.
Um, of course, but you know, I think we can use other information.
From what I understand, that's a good point. If I can qualify, it's not just the MCAs. It's grades, it's FastBridge, it's other assessments.
Yeah, I, I, I don't stand here tonight under, having a full understanding of what would be data that would help inform that conversation. I, I'm, I'm making some statements about the types of data that I think would be helpful and the concept that triangulation of data is necessary to, to truly inform decisions. That's what I was speaking of. So I, but if, if they, if the motion included the specific data that would need to be brought forward, that would be helpful.
Chair White.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but current schedule, there is not a work session in June, it's just a retreat. So if we moved it to June, there would need to be addition of a work session.
Thank you for that.
To big clarity.
Actually, that's a good point. Would we rather do this at a retreat? That's something that we could actually do a deeper dive instead of at a study session, dedicate it. I'm just throwing that out at the top of my cuff.
I think for transparency on this topic with our community, I think it would be better in a study session.
Except we could, I happen to agree with Director France, a retreat setting would allow for a deeper dive into a more accurate cohort of data, if I'm not, if I'm hearing everybody correctly. So we have a, we have a motion on the table to amend the original amendment, to move the requested study session topic to May. If there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails four to three. Now back to the original motion. Whether it was a first and a second to bring the study session, bring this to a study session in March.
Correct.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails four to three.
Can I make a no motion?
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Do you need a vote to bring something to study session or just a motion and a second?
We don't need a vote at all.
I don't need a vote at all.
So can.
But based on what I'm hearing tonight, the board will, the board of the boards will the board, if this is going to happen, I think it has to be later rather than sooner. And I think the best option is a, is a June retreat, study session, whatever you want to call, we can add something to the calendar, that's, that's up to us. So just so that we have the right kind of data that, that we are going to have to have in order to revisit this, like you said, is reasonable, reasonable to do, I will, I will certainly put forth that would we bring this back, either add a study session or what are the, we have a one retreat date in June, is that what I?
We have a retreat date in June that's normally reserved in June for.
Is that date already set?
Well, it is, but it's something that we change every year based upon availability, sometimes staff, especially at that time of year, you name it. But it's, it's kind of just a placeholder. We can do, we're the board, we can, if we want to schedule another study session, we can.
So can I make a motion to add a study session in June to discuss the math pathways?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six, one. I will get you back, I'll work with Dr. Thomas and Vice Chair Bullion on a date in June and try to get that out to you at a reasonable advance time. And as well as the administration, so they can get whatever data they need. And if there is specific data, Director Atkinson, that you'd be interested in, if you get that to me, so that I can flush it out and we can go from there. All right, thank you. Sorry, my voice is about had it. Next on the agenda, the school board meeting dates for 2025, 26. As presented, I'll accept a motion to accept those dates.
So made.
By Director Johnson, second.
Second.
By Director Mason. There's no discussion? All in favor signify by saying, oh, oh, you don't.
No, I just have a question. I think the October date was on Columbus Day, is that okay to have it on that date?
Yes.
Okay, and then I can't find my paperwork because I had one other date that looked like there was a conflict, sorry. Round a blank, I went through them last night.
November 10th, Martha. November 10th, that's November 11th or 10th or something like that, that is also, I think, a holiday or.
November 11th.
So we're good with the 10th.
That's, okay, that was the other one, I believe, that I was, I had a note on, so. Okay, so as long as we're good to meet on those dates, then those are the only questions that I had, sorry.
Anyone else?
I had a question on December 8th, where it says the study session, if needed, prior to regular meetings, shouldn't that be after? Would we have a study session after December 8th?
We typically only meet once in December.
Right, but if needed, study session if needed would be after the regular meeting, correct? Not before?
Actually, we usually do it before, but yeah.
Before?
We usually do, but we could do either, again, if we want to do it afterwards, we can make, we have plenty of time to make changes.
Can be the same.
Have you ever done it before in the last couple of years?
No, we usually have the study session and then as soon as we're done with the topic for the study session, we go into, especially if we're going to vote on what we talked about in the study session.
Oh, sure. Okay, thank you, that's what that means. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Moving down to policy, we have policy 413, this is a first and final reading. My understanding is there is a very insignificant one-sentence change. Director Herman, do you want to speak to that?
Chair White, members of the board, this is in relation to a change to legislation, that's why it can be read and approved in the same meeting. Legislation did expand the definition under disability, so you see that reflected in the changes in the packet.
Is there a motion to approve policy 413 as presented?
So made.
By Director Bullion, second.
Second.
By Director France. Discussion?
Yes, one question, Director Herman. Was it a change in legislation? Or was it only MSBA added the sentence to their model policy?
Director Johnson, it's my understanding it was a change in legislation, but I can double check on that based off of reading their policy newsletter, but I'll double check.
Okay.
Director Johnson, I can confirm that that exact verbiage is from legislation.
Yes, I, I saw that it was in the legislation, I just didn't see when I, when I read, when I read it, it didn't say that it was updated. So I didn't know if you had additional information from MSBA, it sounds like you do. So that they got an update or something like that, so.
Director Johnson, that's my understanding, if that is incorrect, I will follow up with the board to correct that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Further discussion?
I did have a question. Yeah, so I did see it added to MSBAs too, so that's helpful. I was just also looking through MSBAs and I'm curious, the protected classifications for, everything else mostly follows MSBA's model policy, but for one and four, they were added. So I don't know if there's a reason for that. I know one is covered basically in, I'm sorry, four is covered in eight in MSBA. I was just curious what that means, especially the age classification too.
Director Mason, Chair White, I'm not aware if we can discuss any of that since this is just for the legislative changes, a first and only reading. I just don't know if that's acceptable to have that discussion here or not. I'm happy to answer the question, but I'm just not aware.
It's a very good question. I honestly don't know. I think we're voting on, because, because of the nature of the change, we can do a first and final today.
Chair White, correct? I just didn't know if we could talk about the other parts of the policy that are not related to legislative change in a first and only reading? That's where I.
I think it's just the change.
Goes back. Director Mason, I'm happy to follow up with the board to answer that question.
Thank you, Director Herman. Motion and second on the table, there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. We are moving down to administrative reports. Are there any administrative reports tonight? No? You guys had a lot of face time tonight, so. We'll move down to board reports, I think we have a student council report.
I'll just try to keep it brief. I want to wish everyone a happy woman's history month, of course, for those who celebrate, hopefully everybody. And then just congratulations to a lot of our sports teams and clubs, mock trial, DECA, boys swim and dive, basketball, wrestling, they all made to state or nationals and it's just a really great year, so congrats to those teams. We have a Laker Leaders Talent Show, March 21st, 7:00 PM, that you guys should all go to, so just, we got some great performances lined up, so just have that on your calendar if you're available. In regards to student council, we're just, like, we're kind of recovering from our snowball week, we had a really successful week, great engagement, thank you to those who came to some of our events. And right now, we're just preparing for spring events and kind of working on our year-long standing committee goals. I'd like to highlight the Development Committee for completing their two-year-long project and installing updated feminine hygiene products into the women's bathrooms. And yeah, that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any board reports?
Yes, I'll just mention very quickly, the Southwest Metro Board and staff and families had a retreat, an all-day retreat about three weeks ago. As I mentioned before, they have hired, the district has hired Grace Belvedere Young to do a strategic plan. And so basically, we're outlining our goals in March and April, and so I'll have more to share after that, but I just wanted to mention the retreat and it was lovely, they had families come in, staff members, the, most of the board members were there and our, the new superintendent, so it was a really great day, so.
Thank you.
I just want to echo what our, our student rep said, you know, wrestling made state and took sixth, boys swimming went to state, took third, our girls outline won sections and took third, girls Nordic ski for the first time in school history, gymnastics qualified five individuals, most in school history. And boys basketball, Wednesday at Shakopee, so, pretty excellent.
I attended the Early Childhood Education Committee and I will say that was my first meeting and I was just, it was so awesome to see these itty-bitties in our school district. They're doing some, they have a really awesome parent engagement committee, so it was really exciting to see some new fresh faces there. They're very engaged, they created a book swap within the building, which was awesome. They have some great fun events planned. And one of the things that touched my heart so much was they do something called Art to Remember. So they have, they take the art that the little, the kiddos create and then the parents can buy things like a coaster or a coffee mug and it just, it really touched my heart of all the memories of when my kids were little. Earlier, they stole my thunder that there's 30 staff in the ECS, EC, EC, I can't say that, sorry, it's too late, Early Childhood Education Committee. They raised $15,000 for Polar Plunge Special Olympics and we know a lot of that money came back to our district, so thank you for all that. And that's it, so, thank you.
Director Bullion.
We've, there's been a lot going on, we, day at the Capitol today. I think if I wanted to share a funny from the day was one of our, one of our legislators said, if there was only a magic money tree. And I thought, well, let's get to work. That's my own, I guess that was my own report.
Okay. Director France?
No updates.
All right. Well, we have reached the end of the agenda, our future events are listed, study session on the 24th here at 6 o'clock. We're going to try out a slightly different arrangement, we're going to be up here, see if it works.
I'll do a thumbs up.
Kick around a bunch of different options, this is going to be, try one, we'll see if it works, if it doesn't work, we'll, we will keep working until we get it right. And then the events that are, are listed, spring break's coming up and district office will be closed on April 3rd and 4th. There's no more business to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
By Director Bullion, second.
Second.
Director Johnson, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.